Morning.
Hey there, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, just got a quick glass of water, I'll be right back.
Okay, that's a good idea, I think I'm gonna get one too.
Pepper and ginger, Maureen.
Alright, it's 6:30. We have everybody.
Greg's here, and Mary Kay, waiting for Bridgette. Bridgette, Sarah, Brian.
Good evening.
Hi, Mary Kay.
Hi. Here's Bridgette.
I see Sarah as well.
Okay.
Alright, well, we can start caucus then. Okay, we have committee reports, Bill and Bridgette.
Yep.
Yes.
Alright, and we have a ton of legislation for passage this evening. Bill and I received a, an email from the mayor requesting some amendments on the, on the wastewater treatment flow monitoring study. So, Bill, you're offset with those amendments?
Yes, like, they're very simple amendments.
Okay. Alright, and I could read, I could read it for everybody else. The email says the WWTP flow monitoring study was approved by member communities as part of the 2020 budget for the WWTP last fall. The total contract sum, $367,100. Fairview Park will be separately invoiced for $34,200. $34,200 amount is equal to the installation fee, four months of meter rental, and four months of flow monitoring at six locations in Ward 5 of the city. The meters installed throughout the rest of the city were included in the annual budget, and therefore a part of the monthly invoice that Fairview Park has already paid to the WWTP. Thus, Section 2 of ordinance 2024 should be amended to reflect the actual cost that the city of Fairview Park will pay for the additional metering, $34,200, and not the total cost of $115,900. Additionally, the ordinance should mention six meters, not five. So that's the, that's the amendment in a nutshell. Are there any questions on that?
Unrelated, I got a text from similarly saying he's trying to get that. Yeah, there he is, hey Brian, nevermind.
Set. Okay.
Actually, I did have one question on these. Mary Kay, does this, it says that these do go into Ward 5. Does any of this analysis go to North Homestead treatment plant?
All of the extra meters are metering water that's flowing to North Homestead or Ward 5.
Okay, alright, gotcha, thank you, that's all.
Thanks. Alright, Councilwoman Waring, you have an ordinance for passage without three readings?
Yes.
I'll set there. Councilwoman, Councilwoman King, you have three ordinances and a resolution for passage without three reads?
Yes.
On those as well, okay. Then, let's see, Councilwoman King, you have an ordinance of two resolutions for third and final passage?
Yep.
I've set there, very good. Okay, um, we have, I believe, three, three people have asked to speak during the public session this evening, so we have that. Also, we discussed briefly at committee last week whether council was going to, whether I should entertain a motion to adjourn for recess this evening. What was the consensus on that? Should I entertain this motion this evening, or? How's council feel?
Yeah, I mean, we can always call a special meeting, right? As long as we get appropriate notice out, right?
Absolutely, yeah, we do it every summer.
Yeah.
I'd be comfortable with it. I question, though, with the budget numbers that continue to come in. You know, I, I feel like, I feel like it's a very long time should those budget numbers in July come in a little bit off. So I'd like to just make sure that we keep an eye on that as we move through the recess. So that if we do need a special council meeting, we have time and thoughts and information that can go into how we can help the city.
Yeah, council, the council and the administration will continue to communicate throughout any recess. The mayor and I have already discussed this as well.
Yeah, I kind of thought the same as Sarah, and then, I guess, too, if there was, if it didn't need to be as long or something, you know, to, maybe, I mean, I know we already had a little bit of a break in the beginning of COVID, so I didn't know. We shrunk this down maybe to the regular length, that would, you know, be a little better for us too. But, yeah, I mean, if we could just call meetings too, I guess, that's fine.
Yes, yeah, we can call the meetings at the pleasure of the mayor, so.
Yeah, did the mayor have any issue with it, or, you know?
No, I didn't, I had just reached out to Council President Kilbane to see if that was something that was gonna be discussed so we could plan accordingly for legislation. We will continue to keep, keep you informed of developments as, as they arise. Like, so, you know, if, if I anticipate there's something that we need to, you know, need to address, we'll let you know as soon as we can, so you can plan accordingly.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Okay, um, Brian, do you have anything for roundtable?
Um, I guess, Mayor, how, I didn't go today, but how was the Gemini Center today?
It went well, about 4:30, I think there was 138 people who had checked in from this morning. 181, 181 as of 4:30. They got some positive feedback from people there. One, one request to return the the scale back to the floor, so we'll talk to, talk to Mary about that. It was moved because it's another item that has to be cleaned, but we'll talk to Mary about that. But overall, well, I, I did see Mary and Danielle. And I, Mary Kay was there late this afternoon, and, you know, you know, everything sounded that it went well.
Nice, it's good.
Thanks.
Maureen, I did want to let you know, I had the opportunity to go in there on Friday, and I was really impressed with the thought that our employees had put into how to place things, where to place things, the things that are too light, and people might try to move, how to box them off so that we know where they belong. They did a really good job, and I was really impressed when I walked in there Friday. So, you know, kudos to them.
I, I agree, they did a fantastic job in, you know, setting it up from an actual, you know, workout facility. They also did a great job throughout, the service department did a great job throughout, and cleaning the place. Very, very pleased with their efforts and their hard work and thoughtfulness throughout, so. And we're working on phase two to open up some more parts of the building, and we'll keep you posted on that.
Hey Mayor, would you know, you said 181 people came as of 4:30. What was a typical Monday like?
You know, I don't know that, we, we are able to track, and we're going to track, you know, track attendance and compare it to, you know, other dates to see, you know, what type of interest that we've had, and if there's a peak time. Things need to be tweaked, you know, we do have that two hours from 9:00 to 11:30 for seniors and people who have compromised immune systems, and, you know, that, see how that's going, and, you know, just basically, you know, to keep an eye on the interest and the use, and make changes as we go. But I, I, I don't know what the typical use is, but, you know, we do have those figures, and we can check with Mary on that.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have a few, Mayor, if you'd want me to just bring that up, I just happen to have Mary's report here.
Sure, that'd be great, thank you.
So, um, the total membership in 19 was 8,356. Total average daily member visit was 725 visits a day. The average number of silver sneakers daily was 150. Group exercises per week, 61, and silver sneaker classes per week, 31. So, um, that was just for membership and class data. So, they, they also break it down by aquatics. And I can scan some of this over to you if you're interested in seeing that, but it gives you a general idea of the foot traffic.
Right, I was, I was more curious because I really had no idea what the number would be, you know?
Busy.
Thank, yeah, very much, so, absolutely, yeah.
Bill, do you have anything for roundtable?
I have plenty of design commission.
Thank you. Maureen, do you have anything for roundtable?
You know, just a couple of questions, I got some calls from residents. One being, they were inquiring about procedure for rental property inspection. You know, there is a property they were concerned about that's a rental that was inspected on the exterior, but due to COVID, did not have an interior inspection, is that accurate? Do we typically, when somebody files for a rental permission, or whatever the proper title is, do they typically get inspected inside and out?
There is a rental permit, and there are, and interior and exterior inspections. The interior were stayed due to the COVID crisis.
Do they go back then? Will they?
Well, we will, we, we, yes, we, we would go back at some point in time.
Okay, alright, that's, that's one question. The other is, I've noticed it as had a few people who called me, there seems to be more and more bulk on tree lawns well before Sunday. And then some people kind of mask it, where they put stuff out on their tree lawn, and put a sign on it, "Free," so maybe then they don't think of it as, you know, garbage. What do we do, you know, as far as the city, you know, if there's people putting stuff, you know, couches out on Thursday, or, you know, just leaving piles of stuff prior to Sunday? Maureen, could I interrupt for one second? I don't know if you're watching the community Facebook page, but this weekend in particular, they had done something, rather than the, the Fairview Freecycle, they said, "Just put all your junk out on Saturday, sign up and let people know what you have on your tree lawn, and then everybody can kind of drive around and pick what they want." And that, to your point, that does violate one of our ordinances, and maybe that's why you got more calls this weekend. We need to consider whether that's an okay thing to do in the city.
Okay.
Because we had three days of garbage because of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did notice a, an increased amount of bulk, and I know there were people that had a lot of bulk items that are not on the Facebook page. And I think what happened is a lot of people were a little stocked up, because remember how there was, you know, when they were collecting yard waste, and they weren't, and there was inconsistent pickup? So my theory was that some people kind of held back because there was some collection issue. So I hope that, you know, dissipates as we go forward.
Yeah, I just, I hope this doesn't, it really was evident all over, and be it triggered by the Facebook events. I got other people thinking, because there definitely stuff put out that there's no way anybody was taking it, was like, complete terrorings. But it was out there, you know, for multiple days, and I just don't want other residents to think, "Oh, gosh, I can put my stuff out well before Sunday," you know, and start to have a problem with this. Because what do we do if people, like, I saw some garbage that was out for days, and you know, do we make them call it all back into their backyard, or how do we handle this?
I've had, I've had some success with asking the police to stop by. Mr. Minnick has brought up, uh, chronic residents, and, and when we were able to try to get notices out, but the police are often most effective in stopping by and just letting people know what the ordinances are. And then if they continue, I can let them know that it's something that they can issue a citation for. You know, some people just don't know, and, and it just takes one visit from the police to kind of bring them up to speed.
Would I have to, if I see things, do I have to call the police, or do the police just routinely do that?
Uh, usually, I find it's so far been my experience that it's on a complaint-driven basis. You know, they, the police don't know, sometimes people get some special permission. They've had a water tank break in their basement, and their contractors bringing it out a little earlier. So they usually wait to hear from us before they approach the resident, and, uh, just explain the, the nature of trash collection and when the appropriate hours are.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Sarah.
Um, still, roundtable, I had something one second ago. Well, um, let me just say that the school board opened the EEC today, the Early Education Center, and they did a phenomenal job helping kids in and out of the cars, getting them in and out of the building, they're operating under all kinds of different rules. No parents are allowed in, they're doing temperature checks before anybody enters the building, staff is wearing masks, and I think they just did a phenomenal job on very short notice getting that building back up and running. So I was pretty proud of that.
Thank you. Bridgette?
I just have one question, um, Mary Long's extension, are we doing something with that? Is she, are we extending her? That's something we're doing tonight?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, uh, Mike, what time, when he wanted us to make that motion?
You can entertain a motion during second time around. During council's second, second time around.
A lot of, we can extend her for 60, 90 days?
July 31st.
Um, at what point does interim become non-interim? She's already been in that position for six months. I mean, are we gonna run into an issue legally, or, um, you know, by ordinance that creates her no longer to be interim just by extending this over and over again? I don't know the legalities of that.
I don't see any problem with extending it, as long as you keep it as an interim free time period, as long as council puts a motion forward and votes on it. Because ultimately, you approve the final decision on who's going to be the director, you know what I mean? Okay.
Would you call for that motion second time around?
Sure.
Alright, thank you.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Greg?
Uh, nothing, couple of calls, people wanting the pool open in addition to the rec, but that's about it.
I'll give, I'll give them your number.
Liz?
Um, I don't have too much, just, if you haven't filed your reports, file them. But that's about all I have, I don't have anything pressing right now. If you, if anybody has issues in their committees that they want to hit the ground running with, if we recess, please let me know. I always have the greatest of our clerks on earth in Ohio to assist me with any questions, and they are wonderful. So, I mean, and that's any topic, actually, so if there, even if there's something that you want to just start looking at and getting information for, let me know, and I can do a blast to them.
Thank you.
Mayor, directors, do you have anything about to say before we adjourn caucus?
Uh, no. That's, that's, I, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll get the regular meeting going in 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know why I don't have the I don't know why my picture's not up. Good to see how beautiful I am.
Sir, lost Bridget.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome. Alright, seven o'clock. Is everybody here?
Maureen?
I think Maureen is here. Okay, it looks like Maureen is back. We have everyone?
Yep.
That's a pre-roll call in the, uh, in the Zoom, Zoom days here. Okay, uh, Chair calls the regular meeting of Council of the City of Fairview Park from Monday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty to order. Have a moment of silent reflection. With the clerk, please call roll.
Can you hear me?
You can hear, I can hear you now.
Okay. Mr. Semerly?
Here.
Mr. Minnick? Mrs. Adler? Maureen, you're muted.
Here. Here.
Mr. Kilbane?
Here.
Mrs. Waring?
Here.
Mrs. King?
Here.
Mr. Berger?
Present.
Okay, we'll have the, uh, committee reports, Environment, Public Works Planning, zoning development, Councilman Minnick.
Council President. Works Planning, Zoning and Development Committee met on Monday, June eighth, twenty twenty at seven P M. To discuss orders twenty twenty four authorizing installation and reimbursement for sewer flow study meters. Participating discussion, Mayor Cooney and Public Service Development Director Costello. Present, there are fourteen meters associated with the Rocky River wastewater treatment plant. Additional five meters were requested for Ward five analyze the North Elmstead plant, which we analyze by our consulting engineers. All the cost for the nineteen meters is a hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Prepaid for the Fairview Park sanitary sewer fund, one five ten. The possibility of city council recessing for July and August was suggested orders twenty twenty four be passed on second reading as an emergency. Motion to pass orders twenty twenty four, a second reading was approved six zero. Also discussed with the letters from Mayor Cooney, Public Service Development Director Costello pertain to the flooding on May fifteenth, twenty twenty in Ward five. Mayor Director stated here, collecting official information will create a timeline for the infrastructure improvement implementation by the end of this year. This completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Minnick. Okay, finance report, Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. The Finance Committee met via video conference on June eighth, twenty twenty at seven eighteen P M. In attendance were members of council, Mayor Cooney, Director Single, Director Costello, Building Commissioner Maynard, and members of the community. Resolution twenty oh seven, the alternative tax budget twenty twenty one was the only thing to discuss. Since Director Single answered all of our questions about this resolution previously, no additional questions or comments were raised, and a motion was made to move this to third read and final passage, and it passed with the vote six to zero. The Finance Committee ended at seven nineteen P M. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman King. There's enough time to begin our legislative agenda. Is there any audience input on legislation that is up for passage this evening? Any questions or comments on legislation that is up for passage this evening? Liz, there was no written request?
No, I received nothing for anything that's on up for passage.
Okay. Alright, so we'll have legislation for passage without three readings, Councilman Minnick.
Thank you, Council President. Looking place orders twenty twenty four before council for emergency passage.
Will the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance twenty twenty four requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilman Minnick, co-sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance authorizing the city of Fairview Park to reimburse the Rocky River wastewater treatment plant for the installation of sewer meters for study and analysis and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Councilman Minnick.
Thank you, Council President. Charter provision, Rule forty nine, requiring the orders be read at three separate meetings be suspended, then be placed before council for emergency passage.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing number, the clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mr. Semerly?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mrs. Waring?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
The motion carries. Prior to call for passage of ordinance twenty twenty four, is there any discussion?
Council President.
Councilman Minnick?
Put a man orders twenty twenty four as follows. In the fourth where as clause, replace with the word six and remove the numeral five in parentheses and insert the numeral six in parentheses. In section two, all the wording after the word exceed and replace with the numeral amount of thirty four thousand two hundred dollars for the additional numeral six meters.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing number, the clerk, please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Mr. Semerly?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mrs. Waring?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance twenty twenty four is amended. Prior to call for passage of ordinance twenty twenty four amended, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing number, the clerk, please call roll on passage of ordinance twenty twenty four amended.
Mr. Semerly?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mrs. Waring?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty four amended passes. Councilwoman Waring.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to place an ordinance before council for emergency passage.
Will the clerk please assign a number and read the title?
Ordinance twenty twenty five requested by the Finance Department, sponsored by Councilwoman Waring. An ordinance amending section nine twenty nine point zero six of chapter nine twenty nine entitled Solid Waste Collection Charges of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Fairview Park and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Councilwoman Waring.
Thank you, Council President. I move that charter provision and rule forty nine requiring that legislation to be read at three separate meetings be suspended and that it be placed before council for emergency passage.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing number, the clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mr. Semerly?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick? Mr. Minnick?
You're muted, Bill.
No, he's not muted. It's just a bad connection. Now, now he's muted. He's muted himself. Now it's unmuted.
Bill, we're taking the role to suspend the motion on, um, ordinance twenty twenty five.
Councilman Minnick, your vote didn't come through. Can you say it again? The connection.
Drop them down.
Bill, your screen is showing muted. Bill, there you go.
Okay.
Yes. Liz, you're gonna continue to roll in the motion?
Mrs. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mrs. Waring?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
The motion carries. Councilwoman Waring.
Thank you, Council President. I move that rule fifty three requiring reference to committee be dispensed with and ordinance twenty twenty five be placed on final passage.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing number, the clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mr. Semerly?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
You're muted, Bill. You're muted, Bill.
Liz, can you unmute him?
I only have a button to ask to unmute, so that's what I'm clicking, and he should be getting a message that it's asking him to
Councilman Minnick, can you unmute your mic? You're currently muted.
Bill, you're on mute. It's been a long night.
Bill, can you hear us?
He should be able to hear us, Council.
I'm unmuted.
There you go.
Just leave it unmuted the whole night.
Yeah, I don't touch anything.
Mrs. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mrs. Waring?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Prior to call for passage of ordinance twenty twenty five, is there any further discussion? Hearing number, the clerk, please call roll on passage of ordinance twenty twenty five.
Mr. Semerly?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mrs. Waring?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty five passes. Councilwoman King?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to place an ordinance before council for emergency passage.
Will the clerk please assign a number and read the title?
Ordinance twenty twenty six requested by Mayor Patrick Cooney, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance establishing the local coronavirus relief fund and affirming that money's placed therein will be extended only for lawful purposes.
Thank you. Councilwoman King?
Thank you, Council President. I move that the charter provision and rule forty nine requiring that legislation be read at three separate meetings be suspended and that it be placed before council for emergency passage.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing number, the clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mr. Semerly?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mrs. Waring?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Councilwoman King?
Thank you, Council President. I move that rule fifty three requiring reference to committee be dispensed with an ordinance twenty twenty six be placed for a final passage.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing number, the clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mr. Semerly?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mrs. Waring?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Prior to call for passage of ordinance twenty twenty six, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing number, with the clerk, please call roll on passage of ordinance twenty twenty six.
Mr. Semerly?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mrs. Waring?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty six passes. Councilwoman King?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to place an ordinance before council for emergency passage.
Will the clerk please assign a number and read the title?
Ordinance twenty twenty seven requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director
Ordinance twenty twenty seven requested by Mary Kay Costello, director of public service and development. Sponsored by councilwoman King, co-sponsored by councilman Minnick. An ordinance authorizing the director of public service and development to purchase pavement marking services and declaring an emergency.
Councilwoman King.
Thank you, council president. I move that the charter provision and rule forty nine requiring that legislation be read at three separate meetings be suspended. And that it be placed before council for emergency passage.
So moved to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing number the clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mister Summerly.
Yes.
Mister Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mister Cobain.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mister Burger.
Yes.
Motion carries. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, council president. I move that rule fifty three requiring reference to committee be dispensed with an ordinance twenty twenty seven. Be placed for final passage.
So moved to have a second.
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 Is there any discussion? Hearing number the clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mister Summerly.
Yes.
Mister Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mister Cobain.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mister Burger.
Yes.
Motion carries prior to call for passage of ordinance twenty twenty seven. Is there any further discussion?
Council president.
Councilwoman Waring.
Thank you, council president. Director Costello, you mentioned in the ordinance. Um, that it says whereas certain city streets have center or edgeline markings. Whereas these pavement markers are necessary. Um, and whereas I believe um to maintain center or line pavement markings. You never mentioned what streets or what the scope of this work is. Could you give us a little bit of an. Understanding as to what it is that we're marking for this amount of money?
Absolutely. Thank you. Uh, on Lorraine Road, there'll be the uh longitudinal or or the the lines that are in the center of the street. On Lorraine Road, Brook Park Road, Westwood Road, Story Road, Worcester Road, West two twenty second and West two ten. Uh, and then we'll also be painting intersections that would be crosswalks and stop bars. At the following intersections of West two hundred and twentieth street. Um, at Lorraine Road, um, and we will be um. Painting the intersections uh at Brook Park and West two twenty second, Mastick, West two twenty second, Macbeth and Westwood. Uh, West two ten would also have intersections painted at Westwood, the Balkan entrance, Westgate, Center Ridge and Campus. Now also Brook Park and Mastick. Um, as you may recall, we were planning to do a construction project south of Lorraine Road, but since there's a school zone and. Do the fact that some of this paint doesn't really last, we've added some some of that work south of the. Um, Lorraine Road in the construction project just to offer better safety for residents.
Thank you very much.
Council president.
Councilman Minnick.
That's the first year we've had an ordinance reference to any street painting in the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman Minnick. Thanks, Director Costello. Thank you, Councilwoman Waring. Is there any further discussion? Hearing number the clerk, please call roll a passage of ordinance twenty twenty seven.
Mister Summerly.
Yes.
Mister Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mister Cobain.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mister Burger.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty seven passes. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, council president. I would like to place an ordinance before council for emergency passage.
The clerk, please assign a number and read the title.
Ordinance twenty twenty eight requested by Mayor Patrick Cooney sponsored by councilwoman King. An ordinance levying special assessments for the collection of the monthly charge for collection of solid waste in the city of Fairview Park, Ohio. For the tax year twenty twenty one and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Councilwoman King.
Thank you, council president. I move that the charter provision and rule forty nine. Requiring that legislation be read at three separate meetings be suspended and that it be placed before council for emergency passage.
So moved to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing number the clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mister Summerly.
Yes.
Mister Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mister Cobain.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mister Burger.
Yes.
Motion carries. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, council president. I move that rule fifty three requiring reference to committee be dispensed with an ordinance twenty twenty eight be placed on for final passage.
So moved. Do I have any discuss? Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing number the clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mister Summerly.
Yes.
Mister Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mister Cobain.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mister Burger.
Yes.
Motion carries prior to call for passage of ordinance twenty twenty eight. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing number the clerk, please call roll a passage of ordinance twenty twenty eight.
Mister Summerly.
Yes.
Mister Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mister Cobain.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mister Burger.
Yes.
The ordinance twenty twenty eight passes. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, council president. I would like to place a resolution before council for emergency passage.
The clerk, please assign a number and read the title.
Resolution twenty ten requested by Mayor Patrick Cooney sponsored by councilwoman King, co-sponsored by councilman Minnick. A resolution requesting that the city of Rocky River apply for financial assistance. The water pollution control loan fund program for the funding of the Rocky River wastewater treatment plant. Chemically enhanced primary treatment project design, engineering and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Councilwoman King.
Thank you, council president. I move that the charter provision and rule forty nine requiring that legislation be read at three separate meetings be suspended. And that it be placed before council for emergency passage.
So moved to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing number the clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mister Summerly.
Yes.
Mister Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mister Cobain.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mister Burger.
Yes.
Motion carries. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, council president. I move that rule fifty three requiring reference to committee be dispensed with and resolution twenty ten be placed on final passage.
So moved to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing number the clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mister Summerly.
Yes.
Mister Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mister Cobain.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mister Burger.
Yes.
Motion carries prior to call for passage of resolution twenty ten. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing them will clerk, please call roll a passage of resolution twenty ten.
Mister Summerly.
Yes.
Mister Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mister Cobain.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mister Burger.
Yes.
Resolution twenty ten passes. We will now have legislation for third reading and final passage. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, council president. I would like to place ordinance twenty twenty three up for third read and final passage.
The clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance twenty twenty three requested by finance director Greg Single sponsored by councilwoman King. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to engage the Ohio auditor of state to provide additional services. As part of the two thousand and nineteen fiscal year audit and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Prior for call, prior to call for passage of ordinance twenty twenty three, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing number the clerk, please call roll a passage of ordinance twenty twenty three.
Mister Summerly.
Yes.
Mister Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mister Cobain.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mister Burger.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty three passes. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, council president. I would like to place resolution twenty oh seven for for third read and final passage.
The clerk, please read the title.
Resolution twenty oh seven originated by the finance department requested by Mayor Patrick Cooney sponsored by councilwoman King. A resolution adopting the alternative tax budget of the city of Fairview Park, state of Ohio. For the fiscal year January first, two thousand and twenty one and submitting the same to the Cuyahoga County Fiscal Officer and declaring an emergency.
Right call for passage of resolution twenty oh seven. Is there any discussion? Hearing number the clerk, please call roll on passage of resolution twenty oh seven.
Mister Summerly.
Yes.
Mister Minnick. Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mister Cobain.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mister Burger.
Yes.
Resolution twenty oh seven passes. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, council president. I would like to place resolution twenty oh eight up for third reading and final passage.
The clerk, please read the title.
Resolution twenty oh eight requested by Mary Kay Costello, director of public service and development. Co-sponsored sponsored by councilwoman King, co-sponsored by councilman Minnick. A resolution requesting that the city of Rocky River apply for financial assistance from the water pollution control loan fund program. For the funding of the Rocky River wastewater treatment plant final clarifier rehabilitation project and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Prior to call for passage of resolution twenty oh eight. Is there any discussion? Hearing them with the clerk, please call roll a passage of resolution twenty oh eight.
Mister Summerly.
Yes.
Mister Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mister Cobain.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mister Burger.
Yes.
A resolution twenty oh eight passes. And that will conclude our legislative agenda for this evening. We'll now have reports and communications from the mayor and his directors. Mayor Cooney, if you're ready.
Uh, yes, thank you, council president Cobain. I just want to remind people that uh the senior center is still coordinating delivery of frozen meals to uh individuals. Who are over sixty years old. If you know somebody who is interested in doing that, uh please call city hall and we'll get them signed up for that program. Uh, I have some good news to announce with respect to the building department. We've been advised uh that. Last week, Bank of America started a one point eight million dollar renovation at the old mattress from location on Center Ridge. Uh, we do not have a date as to when that uh construction uh will be completed at that location, but we will keep you posted. Uh, as Councilwoman Minnick uh mentioned in the earlier meeting. Uh, this Wednesday at June fifteenth, seven o'clock, planning and design uh has a a meeting. Um, they're happy to report that the Gemini Center is back open. Um. Fitness floor opened at six AM this morning. Uh, at four thirty PM, uh we had uh one hundred eighty one check-ins for the day. I'd like to thank the recreation service department staffs for their hard work in getting uh the building ready. Uh, for our members uh for their hard work throughout the shutdown and. And cleaning, repairing uh and taking care of the building. Uh, it was uh if if people have had a chance to go in there, they really have done. They they did a fantastic job and I'm. I appreciate all their efforts. Um, when we did open it up, we were focusing on keeping the space safe for our members, our employees and our residents and. Uh, I believe that that was accomplished. Uh, that will also be our goal with respect to the other phases in opening up the building. I know people have an interest in the pools and the gymnasium as well as some programming. Uh, we've been talking about that and as we have updates, we will provide those to you. Uh, the West two thirteen water project started today. Uh, we're hoping that'll be wrapped up by the end of August. Uh, um, the second round of micro grant program will be be completed here in the next hopefully week or so. And we uh anticipate having a third round in the near future. Uh, when we do send that material out, we will share with council so you can distribute it to. Uh, to uh local businesses that you know that might be interested in the program. And when we do that, we'll provide you with a list of those recipients. Uh, who've received, who've applied and received grants. Uh, so you uh, you know, you don't share it again. Uh, we in response to the Rust Belt Riders um. Survey that was included in our newsletter, we received sixty four positive responses. Uh, we'll be meeting with representative of Rust Belt Riders here in the near future to see if uh there's a location here at city hall that would be. Um, uh, you know, be acceptable to them and to us to have people uh drop their items off. Uh, I would like to thank Councilwoman King for bringing this uh program to our extension as well as one of our residents. Um, Becky Arsenna who called in uh also inquired about it and I'd like to thank um. My assistant Kathleen Fane for reaching out to Rust Belt Riders and coordinating uh the program with them. As we have more information regarding the program, we'll share it, share with you. Uh, as I've mentioned before, uh in Lakewood, they had uh in. Less than a year, they had a, they were able to divert over one hundred thousand pounds of food waste from the landfill. And I believe their initial response was uh was less than the responses that we received here in Fairview Park. So we will keep you posted on that. And again, I appreciate everybody's uh uh who. And just in the program. Uh, the fire department has started citywide hydrant flushing. There will be signs posted when they are in a neighborhood. Uh, with that, if you know advising people of the of the flushing, we will uh. You know, we we talked to Chief Raffin about how that is done. It's not done uh like leaves where they do it. uh like leaves where they do it street by street. It's done, you know, the, the, the procedure is a little different depending upon their uh their timeframe, you know, the time that they have available during the day. But we're going to try to uh post updates to, to, to public uh as, as that flushing is going on. And so stay tuned with regard to that. I'd like to congratulate Lieutenant Paul Shepherd, uh placing first on the recent Police Chief Promotional Test. Uh, there were two candidates uh for the, for the position, Lieutenant Paul Shepherd and Lieutenant Mike Wickers, both of whom scored over uh in the ninety percent uh over ninety percent on the test. I think that's a very good indication of the caliber of officers that we have and their dedication to uh to their, to their profession and to the city. So uh again, I'd like to congratulate Lieutenant Shepherd on, on that. Chief Offerman will be retiring here in October, and when we have a specific date for him, we will pass that along. Also, um, start, uh, started Memorial Day. Uh, the week of Memorial Day, we have auxiliary patrols for our parks uh nearly every day. That's a four-hour shift. The auxiliaries uh go to our parks and check and we'll check to see that people are safe, check to see that things are being taken care of. Uh, and that's a four-hour detail on a daily basis. So uh if you see an auxiliary there, uh, you know, that's, that's the, the purpose uh of, of his uh his detail at that time. So I'd like to finally congratulate all our graduates uh here in Fairview Park, kindergarten, fifth grade, eighth grade, high school, college. Um, and wish all of them great success as they move forward and uh hope everybody stays safe and healthy in the summer. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Director of Public Service and Development, Costello.
Thank you, Council President. Last week, uh Wednesday evening, there was a, a bit of a windstorm and brought down some branches and leaves along West Two Twen- Two Ten, that corridor uh north of Lorraine. Our crews were out last week chipping some of those limbs that those residents brought out. We're also watering the flower baskets and flower planters that you see along Lorraine Road every day, including Saturdays, and and a special thank you to our garden club for making that happen. I also have crews out working on asphalt repairs. We're finally getting grass at the parks under control so that we don't have to cut them twice i- in one visit. So it's uh starting to free up some time for us. We began in the Haber West uh Two Twentieth, West Two Twenty Seven area near Macbeth. Um, and uh we'll continue working to make repairs in the city. Our service crews are working inside the Senior Center, making the most of that shutdown time. Uh, they have painted the billiards room recently, and we are in the process of refinishing that floor. We're also going to be refinishing the kitchen floor and making some repairs to the kitchen floor. Our crews are also going to be painting the floor in the Police Department, a new evidence room. If you had a chance to tour the new locker rooms, you may or may not have had a chance to see the new evidence room. If not, it's um it's a vast improvement to the former shooting range that I'm sure Councilmember Minnick can uh relate to. Uh, and finally, uh kudos to our Building Commissioner Walt Maynard. Uh, we had been uh getting some complaints about private property grass issues. It was just hard for people to keep up with. Of the four notices that were issued last week, residents have caught up. There is a one notice that went out today for a resident, so things in that regard are starting to slow down as well. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Finance Director Single, are you with us?
Sir Chairman, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, today the mayor fa- sent out the final numbers from Rita for period five. Uh, if there are any questions, please let me know. Also, with respect to the audit, we asked for and received a, an extension uh up to July thirty-first to finalize the audit, give the auditors a little bit more time to uh continue their work, and they will need to be on site here in the near future uh to finalize some um further review. And I thank council for passing the legislation on tonight's agenda. It is very helpful. Wish you all a happy summer, and as always, if there are any questions, please let me know, and that concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Law Director Riley, do you have anything for us? Law Director, are you there?
He, he, he's on the phone. Uh, his phone's muted.
All right, um, City Engineer McKay, do you have anything for us? Michael?
Yeah, just a quick little report. Thank you, Council President Cobain. We're, we're continuing to work on the West Two Ten reservicing and uh road repair pro- uh plans. And uh we'll have that ready for bidding in twenty twenty-one. Thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Engineer McKay. Okay, uh it's now time for our public session. Recu- I've uh received a few formal, formal requests to speak this evening. Please state your name and address, and uh Kelly Gillis, are you online? Kelly Dubay Gillis.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me, Council President Cobain?
Yes, I can. Go right ahead.
Okay, great.
State your name and address and go right ahead.
All right, I'm Kelly Dubay Gillis. I reside at one nine one six four Henry Road, Fairview Park, Ohio, four four one two six. Um, I don't, it's hard to know where to start, really, and I guess um the context of the comments I wanted to bring tonight, it's comments and an invitation. Uh, if folks have been watching the news, everyone's well aware of the protests that have been happening nationwide in response to the murder of George Floyd. And, you know, we've seen protests going on for days now at the national level, the international scene. And I think it's time that we take a look here in Fairview Park about um, you know, the role that we play as citizens, as community members, and as elected leaders. And so, you know, I've never experienced racism, obviously, and I've heard stories about it happening in Fairview Park. Um, but, you know, it's something I haven't necessarily witnessed, but I'd be naive to think that it doesn't happen here and in our town. And I think we need to acknowledge that as community members, that there are instances of racism, whether or not, you know, we see it every day on the streets, it's in our systems, our organizations. And I think it's incumbent on us um as white people to stand up, speak out, and do something about it. And so I think we need to do this not only for ourselves, but for the families in Fairview Park who need to know we have their backs, we care about them, we care about their well-being, we care about equity. And, you know, we want them here in Fairview Park. And so it's time to have a conversation in the community. So I'd like to extend an invitation to uh city council members, uh staff at City Hall, uh Mayor Cooney, and anybody who happens to be listening. I've extended this invitation to community members through the Facebook Community Page. But we are starting what's called an anti-racist Community Book Club. And we will be reading um a title called How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram X. Kendi. It's been sold out nationally since the George Floyd protests have um been going on, but it's available. I've been working with the uh Fairview Park Branch Library to uh set up this book club, and we have a lot of interested participants. I know you all will be going on recess very soon, so hopefully while you're on summer recess, you'll take the opportunity to read How to Be an Anti-Racist and join the book club discussion. Right now, it's tentatively scheduled for July thirteenth, based on the reopening of the library and everything the library staff is dealing with. But I really do hope that we will start listening to community members who have stories to tell about racism that they've experienced in Fairview Park. And that we start talking to each other and making a plan as to what we're going to do about the racism, all different types of racism that exist in Fairview Park. It's, sometimes it's underneath the surface in the policies, in the, the organizations, in the institutions. And it's really our job to step up, especially you all as policymakers, to recognize it and start to deal with it and dismantle it in our community. So I hope you'll participate in our anti-racist book club coming by thirteenth. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks very much, Ms. Gillis, for bringing this important topic to uh our council meeting this evening. Okay, we have a Ms. Jessica Skiles. Open up, what's your, your name? Are you with us? Ms. Jessica Sky- Skiles?
I'm sorry, yes, she submitted her comments via email and asked if they'd just be read into the record.
Okay, do you have those?
I do. Um, uh, okay, so Jessica Skiles, uh, two twenty-four thirty Morton Avenue, Fairview Park, Ohio. Subject, uh, council meeting, system, systemic racism. Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment on the topic of systemic racism as it pertains to Fairview Park. I was a manager at a fast food restaurant in Fairview Park for a few years. During this time, I had the pleasure of managing a diverse range of employees in age, in race, age, and sexual orientation. Fairview Park is a wonderful place to be. It's a quaint, beautiful, it's quaint, beautiful, and active with great people. While most of our regular customers were pleasant, like anywhere, there was a small share of ignorant ones as well. My issue is that, after being asked why we decided to hire so many black people or telling me I shouldn't allow Muslim employee to wear religious head coverings. Not only do I have to maintain professional and shrug it off despite my outrage, I had to continue serving people like this. It came to a point where if I saw a regular customer in line that was a repeat offender of racism, I would go tend to that customer personally so that my employees wouldn't have to endure degradation to make minimum wage. Some of these teenagers at their first job. It would never happen to me. No one would ever question my existence in Fairview Park because of my race, gender, or orientation. I think that business owners, employees, and patrons should be encouraged to stand up to racism when it occurs and be given the opportunity to decline services to those who make blatant and suggestive racist offenses. Just like we have no smoking signs and fair employment signs, Fairview can actively participate in act, in anti-racism by maybe announcing it at their front door with the racism-free zone sign. Just an idea from a concerned citizen. Again, thank you for discussing this topic. Let's keep making Fairview a great place to grow.
Thank you, Ms. Skiles, for submitting that, and thank you, Clerk Westbrook, for reading it. Next to the clerk.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Liz Westbrook, and I reside at fourteen seventy-three Newman Avenue, Lakewood. The first thing I'd like to say is that black lives matter. I come to you tonight not only in the role not only in the role you typically see me in as Clerk of Council, but as Liz Westbrook, U.S. citizen, and more importantly, a black woman. I come to tell you my experiences in this space as a resident of Fairview Park, former resident of Fairview Park, and as a black woman in the hopes that it will wake some, but also to foster a much-needed conversation on race. I have been going back and forth with myself, trusted advisors, and friends as to whether I should even speak tonight. But my whole being keeps whispering back to me that I must. I have been fortunate enough to see the issue of race and racism through a lens the majority of you have never and will never experience. I have lived a life where in my education, life experiences, and work, I am often the only black person in the room. I'd like to say that despite this fact, I have thrived in each of them. I learned, much like many of your children are now learning in this very environment, to walk around and ignore people's ignorance and denial of racism. And that's not saying everyone's doing that, but it's happening. I can't recall the exact moment or event that caused me to actually look at something and identify it as racism, but I'm glad that my eyes were open to it early in my teenage years. I'm also proud to be, to have inherited the blood of the homie Amazons of Benin, Africa, which prevents me from just laying down and accepting things that are simply unjust, along with a pretty good compass of right and wrong. Over the past twenty years, I have served on civil service boards for uniformed officers, human relation commissions, and task forces regarding racial disparities. I've been elected to public office and served as an advisor and board member of many civic and civil rights-minded boards. I do not say all of that to brag. Just to let you know, I have seen, heard, and experienced nearly every aspect of racism of the racism spectrum in my forty-five years of living. I sit here tonight to tell you that Fairview Park should not be content on how it is perceived, has dealt with, or is currently dealing with the issue of race, and more specifically, racism. Unfortunately, there is no other term besides racism to describe the inequalities of race. The absolute worst comes to mind when you, when someone says it, which is why many are set off into the first stages of grief. Disbelief, denial, bargaining, guilt, anger, and depression. And they refuse to accept that it could be involved in any part of their lives, or worse yet, their very being. Be that as it may, the word is here, and I'm here to tell you that it does exist. It exists right here in Fairview Park. And while I do not know, and while I do know that not every white person is racist, I am also learned enough to know that it is not enough to just not be racist. We have reached the tipping point where you must be anti-racist and also be conscious of the idiosyncrasies that come along for the ride with its not-so-careful friend, not so, not-so-careful cousins of microaggressions and implicit bias. And there are a few other types, but those are the two that I'm going to concentrate on. I sat here at the last council meeting and listened to the police chief get asked a specific question regarding the training and equipment of officers in relation to the protesting and unrest in Cleveland. I listened as he laid out in the most broad-stroke way possible the use of force, implementation of tasers, techniques, training, and examples of some pretty bad treatment they have been on the receiving end of. I cringed when he said that his officers have always maintained the highest professionalism and are believed to be credible to the judiciary and citizenry. The, the main reason I cringed was because on many occasions, that was not my experience with them. Nor was it the experience of the immediate black male members of my family on several occasions. I can tell you specific examples where I believe my family has experienced racism, mostly covert and under the color of law. When my then-husband was stopped on multiple occasions. Not once was he ever arrested, but he was always subject to harassment, in my opinion, to what was explicit bias by asking if, for instance, he had any drugs, had any felonies, to tell him that he, to don't think he was getting off because he knew someone that worked at City Hall. Or through implicit bias, through sometimes short, novel-worthy police reports filed later citing that he had, and this is my word, the audacity to look an officer in the eye while driving by him or brushed off, or brushed off indiscriminately when he asked to open the glove box when he was stopped on another occasion, as if a black male that previous week had not been killed for doing the same. He made, he was made to be some type of villain through an unchecked false, through unchecked false police reports. And I know, because my name also appears in some of those police reports, I was claimed to have been trying to trap officers, being hysterical, and a myriad of other false accusations. I remember one particular instance where we were supposed to be spending the evening out for my youngest daughter's birthday, but not before first stopping at the police station so I could inquire why my son quote-unquote fit the description that day of something that I still to this day don't know what was, what it was for. And the individual attempting, once he realized I wasn't, I was unrelenting to once he realized I wasn't, I was unrelenting, to steer away that conversation and tell me about another young black man who lived in Fairview Park, who wasn't such a threat when he was younger, but now apparently seemed to be suspicious on sight as he told me stories that I probably didn't need to know about him. My son also would be stopped on several occasions while walking to visit friends because someone in the neighborhood saw him as suspicious. Um, for, uh, some kids throwing rocks two streets over where he was nowhere in the presence. Um, I remember going to talk to the chief on a couple occasions about the troubling patterns of some of his patrolmen. I even asked him to possibly have his officers reread and edit their reports to make them truthful. The response I received was that, in essence, he was satisfied with their accounts, and that would not happen. He also, I'm assuming, in an attempt to deflect, began to inquire about and tell me, inquire and tell me about an incident that was in the Fairview Park Police System of an incident involving my then-brother-in-law with Fairview Police. Again, something that had nothing to do with me, nor should have been brought up at all. These are just a few incidences, and I don't bring these examples to shame or bash the police department. They are certainly, they are certainly not alone. I have also experienced racism in my work experience here at City Hall over the last seven and a half years. While it could largely be contributed to an environment and tone set from the top, many engaged in the culture, simply because they could, because it was a safe space. I should not have known, I should not have known that I had a colorful nickname or was spoken of in derogatory ways when, where someone could have spoken up but didn't, or even left off, bypassed, sent condescending emails, told of stories where directors have used the worst racial expletives to describe how to hang something on a wall, have my personal property damaged right here in the City Hall parking lot, and despite cameras, no one knew what happened, or my views negated in an attempt to gain information for this council to just do my job. Those are just to name a few. Uh, some of, some of these, some of you council members may remember me even being the subject of a quote-unquote conspiracy to get rid of those like me, including me, with contrary opinion and those that are attempting and those that are attempting to carry on the legacy through a new council. I am pretty good at seeing things for what they are, and as you are witnessing now, calling them out. Yes, it is bothersome to have to keep a still resolve despite all that and more, because yes, it still occurs. And I'm sure it will be denied in days to come, all too aware that racism in and of itself is unfortunately not a crime. I apologize for tearing off the blinders that could not see, that many could not see from over their eyes, or simply choose not to remove to be able to say it doesn't happen here. But I was taught to call a thing a thing and to speak truth to perceived power. The only way, too, is through. And through finally dealing with this ugly issue, you get to the final part of the most terrible parts of grief, to get to the final stage of acceptance and hope. Fairview Park, I know this is a bedroom community, but please don't sleep on this time in history. The heartbeat of racism is denial. Many long overdue changes in positions have already begun to occur over, over the whole world in just a few weeks. This will not just be a blip on the radar of history. Posting your anger, deflections, resistance, and passive aggression angst on Facebook or other forms of social media in the hopes of soaking fear and creating more fires around this issue is simply not the answer. To me, as it is not the answer to me, as it just reinforces that you just don't want to accept or understand this worldwide pandemic, this other worldwide pandemic. So now that you know, what will you do? What's the solution? One of my favorite quotes is, "A fault confessed is half addressed." Let's start there. Most importantly, you have to, you have to make the very hard step of admitting that it exists and have a willingness to address and denounce it everywhere, right then and there when it occurs. Here are some suggestions. The administration, police, and this council should make a deliberate statement regarding racism in general. The city should establish protocols and procedures for addressing it and make it clear that it is unacceptable in any form. Public denouncements for individuals such as Ohio State Senator Huffman, when they make clearly racist statements, or even closer to home, ask your local representative, David Greenstand, who boasts responsible and responsive representation on one hand, but was largely irresponsible and non-responsive to his constituents constituents when he voted against banning the Confederate flag, a flag that has no place anywhere, but most especially Ohio, where it has zero history. The Ohio Municipal League sent an excellent primer created by the National League of Cities, which I forwarded in my weekly bulletin I sent to you. That is another place to start. Search out cities and organizations already doing the work. There is a church right over the border of Fairview that has had a Black Lives Matter sign hanging boldly for years now. They could probably be a resource. Lakewood has just, they're actually having a meeting tonight, but they are discussing this issue with several different pieces in place, including a collaborative with the Y to look at the issue of racism. You can join the book club that Kelly was speaking of during her comments. Determine what this city's history and priorities are surrounding race and racism. Many don't even know, I found out, about that this city is still currently under a federal consent decree regarding discriminatory, discriminatory hiring practices. I sit, like I said, on many other places as one of the only black faces for organizations, and I don't have an issue with that. The solution, like the problem, will not be fixed overnight. To this multi-generational, multi-generational problem will not just be fixed by saying you're not racist or that you are colorblind. That is not a safe answer anymore. The solution requires much harder work than that. It requires an honest and word look to first acknowledge that it exists and the tangible and intangible benefits of not having to ever have done that. Then you must be, be brave enough to call it out, every instance, every time. And if you're upset about the truths that I have brought to your attention, perhaps you should examine the lies that are making it comfortable. There is no neutrality in this. To do nothing is to allow it to continue. Now is not the time to take on the victim mentality either. To those that checked in on me, sat and listened in my venting over the last couple weeks, you know who you are, and I simply say thank you. To this council, those of you that have taken any inkling of time to truly get to know me, however small it may be, and let the content of my character lead the way, I simply say thank you. Lastly, this is not my work to do. I have literally been doing it all my life. The world might not be watching, but I and many others are. Thank you. Black lives matter.
Thank you, Clerk. I just want to say to one of the hardest-working, most beautiful people I've ever met, that I am truly sorry for you and your family have endured while being in the city of Fairview Park. And, uh, things need to change everywhere. There's no other, there's, there's no other request to speak in public session this evening. We'll have miscellaneous business and comments from members of council. Councilman Somerly.
I don't have anything.
Councilman Minnick.
The design commission will hold a virtual Zoom meeting this Wednesday, seventeen. Two eleven twenty-five Lorraine Road, in Franck. DJD Investment Company, do plans for exterior renovations. Four thousand Thomas Lane Parcel, City of Fairview Park. Present the review of plans for asphalt pathway, fencing, benches, rash receptacle, lighting, landscaping, and buffering. That completes my report. Thank you.
Councilwoman Adler.
I want to extend my, excuse me, my thanks to Ms. Skiles, Ms. Gillis, and to Liz for speaking up with regard to these historic events. Pardon? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I just want to thank Ms. Skiles, Gillis, and Ms. Westbrook for sharing their sentiments and their feelings over issues that most definitely have had to have been addressed over the course of history. They've come to the forefront now, and I'm proud to say, you know, I've noticed a few residents of Fairview on the corner of two ten and Lorraine, you know, sitting with Black Lives Matter signs and other such things to show their support. It's been a small number, but, you know, it gets things started. The things that have been shared, you know, about a book club and more so about action that needs to be taken, most definitely, I have to say, is something that we as Fairview Park political leaders need to take an active role in. I know my own sister-in-law has two sons who are black, and she, she already has noticed, you know, there are two adopted sons that she's noticed the number of cars that are pulled over on Lorraine Road, of which the drivers.
The things that have been shared, you know, about a book club and more so about action that needs to be taken, most definitely, I have to say, is something that we as Fairview Park political leaders need to take an active role in. I know my own sister-in-law has two sons who are black, and she, she already has noticed, you know, there are two adopted sons that she's noticed the number of cars that are pulled over on Lorraine Road, of which the drivers. The things that have been shared, you know, about a book club and more so about action that needs to be taken, most definitely, I have to say, is something that we as Fairview Park political leaders need to take an active role in. I know my own sister-in-law has two sons who are black, and she, she already has noticed, you know, there are two adopted sons that she's noticed the number of cars that are pulled over on Lorraine Road, of which the drivers.
Liz? Liz?
You, Dummerine?
No, I was just, I was just wrapping up with just, again, supporting Liz in the efforts that Fairview Park needs to make to, to not just open people's eyes, but to take action, to do what we can.
You're going to be getting a replay of what you're, while you're talking.
Right, I, I, I'm sorry, like.
You, Dummerine?
I have computers herself. That'll work.
Wrapping up, just again, supporting Liz in the efforts that Fairview Park needs to make to, to not.
I, I don't know if you guys can hear me, but I cannot hear anyone right now. Like, I can see it lit up, but I can't hear anyone. I, I heard nothing of what Marine said because for some reason, my computer, I can't hear anything.
I just, I keep getting kicked back. I keep getting kicked back.
But I appreciate your comments, Marine. I was listening on YouTube.
Well, I think, as I said, we need to be a council of action and more so a city of action that does not just conveniently feel like we, because we are predominantly white community, that we don't need to do more. We definitely need to do more and to become a unified community that takes the lead. So thank you to the residents who came, you know, forward tonight and shared their thoughts and sentiments.
Thanks very much, Councilwoman Adler. Councilwoman Waring.
Thank you, Council President. I didn't plan on saying anything tonight, but I feel like after what we have just heard, there's no way. I cannot say something, so forgive me if I am a little disjointed in my thoughts. There's really nothing that I can say in response to what Ms. Westbrook's just told us. There's nothing that I can say in response to what Ms. Skiles just told us, except I am glad there is some change being made. And while I have never been on the receiving end of this, I am open, I am listening, and I am learning. And Ms. Dubey Gillis, I would love to join your book club. I will send you a message after this. The more we listen, the more we open ourselves to hearing other people's experiences, and not just on this, but since it is a timely topic on this, the more well-rounded we become as individuals and, um, I guess I just want to make the statement that I'm open and listening. So for any residents who want to talk to me for, um, the book club, I just, I look forward to learning and figuring out how I can help in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waring. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I have a few things. First, I would like to start off by thanking everyone who spoke tonight at the public session. Liz, thank you very much for sharing your story and examples with us. Um, it was very, very powerful, and you provided us with excellent action steps for administration, for council, and for the community members. Like, um, Councilwoman Adler said, we do need to do more. And I will continue to learn and listen on this topic so that we can continue to do better. On a separate note, I had the privilege of attending the Fairview High School twenty-twenty graduation last week, and I wanted to send a thank you to Dr. Wagner, Mr. Vica, Mr. Hornet, Mr. Honig, school board, and the PTA. They did an outstanding job. The school was decorated. They had people outside after graduation cheering for the graduates, and it was just a wonderful, personal graduation. They did a wonderful job. Under the circumstances, it was fantastic. So I wanted to thank everyone. And then finally, I would like to make a motion to extend Mary Long's intern rec, direct direction director till July thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
I'm moved. That is a discussion. Hearing none, will the clerk please call roll on the motion to extend Mary Long's interim directorship? Did you get the motion, Liz?
I did not. What was the motion?
The motion. Is to extend Mary Long's. As rector.
I got the motion, okay. Mr. Somerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Motion carries. Councilwoman King, do you have anything further?
No, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Berger.
No, I don't have anything.
Thank you. And I would just, I would just like to, uh, to thank everyone who spoke this evening in the public session as well, and, um, and we, we need to look.
I'm sorry, I wasn't getting any audio. Um, I'm sorry, was there a motion presented? Because I did not hear it.
We're getting a play, but we're getting a playback from you. Liz, we're getting a play, but we're getting a playback from you. Right, yeah, I would just like to thank the, uh, people who spoke during the, the public session this evening and, and echo my colleagues' comments that, um, we as public officials need to do whatever we need to do to make Fairview Park the most welcoming place to all races and all people that we possibly can, and, uh, and, uh, we're going to do that. Um, I would also like to, like to say that I think that it's absolutely despicable that a state representative from this area would, would vote not to ban that, that traitorous rag from state fairs in this area. I think it's absolutely despicable. It's embarrassing. With that said, the chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn for recess.
I'm, I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I need a discussion?
No, I just would like to add, uh, if the administration does want to get a special meeting, I will be available all recess. So I know, uh, we've already talked about this. I just want to make sure it gets out there that I know everyone is available, uh, just to make a comment on that. That's all.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adjourn for recess?
Mr. Somerly?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mrs. Waring?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Motion carries. The chair will, if there being no further business to come before council this evening, the chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn for the evening.
I'm moved.
Will the clerk please call, will the clerk please call roll on the motion to adjourn?
Mr. Somerly?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mrs. Waring?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Be safe. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. You as well.